I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving into item 2.02, the approval of the agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you Denise. Moving to 2.03, into the public comment, I do have some blue cards with me here. Just as I go on, as we move into public comment, people addressing the board are asked to not repeat what someone before has said. People addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Person or persons may speak only once at the meeting, and concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. We will not be addressing concerns brought forward during public comment, but certainly working with our administration to appropriately respond to questions as they arise. So I will simply call names in the order that I have them, and if you'll approach the podium and begin your comments. So starting with Tammy McQueen.
My name is Tammy McQueen, I have two students in the school district, I have a junior and a freshman. Both at Liberty North, both my students were virtual last year, and we did keep them out because I do have a high-risk child. And we are, I'm here tonight to ask on their behalf that either vaccinations be required or that masks be required, even if that means that my kids who are fully vaccinated have to wear masks. So I know a lot of people are going to say that it doesn't affect children. I can personally tell you that it does. I have a friend who lost her daughter, age of 17, to COVID, January 30th. She was a junior at Fort Osage High School. So it is home, and it does happen. So I just, I hope that everyone will take that into consideration when they're trying to make their decision on masks. And I know there'll be a lot of people on the other side that are going to talk very loudly about how it shouldn't be done, and it, you know, is against people's rights. I understand that. If you're trying to protect somebody else, that's the side I'm coming from. If there's a 1 in 3 million chance for something to happen, I'm that person. My daughter had cancer at the age of 2, 1 in 3 million chance of that happening. It happened. If there's something I could have done to have prevented that, I would have, absolutely, without a doubt. I gave her all kinds of chemotherapy, and she had radiation at the age of 2 and 1/2. Did I know what was in that? No, I did not. Was it a risk to try to save her life? Yes, it was. Did it damage her permanently? Yes, it did. That is why she is high-risk. She has heart failure from what we did to her at the age of 2. But she's still here. And I just pray that other students will do what is necessary to help protect her so that she can go back to school. She stayed out last year because there was not a vaccination. Her brother stayed out for her last year because there was not a vaccination, and now there is. So I just really, really hope that people will take that into account when they're making their decisions for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Cindy Curtis.
Thank you, everyone, for letting me address the board today, I really appreciate it. I am speaking in regards to my granddaughter. I am also speaking in regards to everyone else's children. I certainly would not tell someone they had to get a vaccine, that's their personal choice. I made a choice, my husband made a choice, it's their choice. The children are the ones that are vulnerable. My granddaughter has kidney disease, she has hearing impairment, she has asthma and a restricted airway. It does not bother her to wear a mask with asthma and restricted airway. I have asthma, and I can tell you, it does more good than harm. It keeps the elements out that you normally breathe in, and it just seems like it's easier to breathe with a mask on. My granddaughter, however, has to be very careful, a disease like this would literally kill her. I personally taught school to her every single day last year. As a grandparent, I stopped my wife and went to her house, and from 9:00 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, I taught her school. And some may say, well, that's not that hard to do, you don't, she doesn't have to. She has a hearing impairment, she cannot hear, she's almost 100% deaf in one ear. She cannot hear all of the sounds, and if you don't hear a sound, you don't necessarily know what the word is. So I had to listen to the teacher and then teach her what was being said. So I sat with her every single day. She wants to go back to school, she needs to go back to school. Social interaction is very, very important. She does not go into any stores whatsoever, they don't go out to eat, they do drive through. As grandparents, my husband and I do the same, because we want to see our grandchildren. I did some research today, and this was as of today, this was today. One, the hospital in Springfield has lost 72 patients so far in July, all of which had not been vaccinated. Earlier this month, the CDC noted that people that have been vaccinated do not need to wear masks. That was great. But then a week later, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and there was a spokesperson from the infectious disease department at Children's Mercy, said that every child older than 2 should be wearing a mask in school regardless of their vaccine status. Vaccinated people that have been infected with the Delta virus can have as much virus as those that are unvaccinated. There's a CDC.
Ms. Curtis, that is time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Next up, Angela Mason.
Good evening, my name is Angela Mason, I have two children in the school district, one in elementary and one in middle school. I want to open with some great advice that somebody once gave me. When you go into a meeting and you know that two sides disagree, it's best if you leave your emotions at the door, and you just stick with the facts. So I just want to go through some facts. As of July 17th, the Clay County Health Department says we have a 25.81% positivity rate. When schools started last year, we were at 12.86% positivity. We have 148 new COVID cases per 100,000 people, per Clay County and the CDC. We are in a high transmission in our community. As of yesterday, Children's Mercy Hospital in Kansas City is full, and they are seeing more COVID cases in children not able to get vaccinated. As of July 22nd, the American Academy of Pediatricians said over, we have over 38,000 cases of COVID in children. That represents 16.8% of all reported cases. And 1.3 to 3.6% of reported hospitalizations are in children. Children do get COVID, and they do get really sick sometimes. They also said in Missouri, only 20% of kids ages above 17 are fully vaccinated. Some epidemiological data I found said that the Delta variant is 200% more transmissible and has a 1,000% higher viral load than any variant we've seen so far of COVID. And as of July 15th, over the previous 14-day period, there was a 94.6% increase in pediatric COVID cases. Today, the CDC recommended universal masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors at schools regardless of vaccination status. One of the reasons they recommend this is a significant portion of our students are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. Masks have improved our effectiveness to prevent our unvaccinated students and slow down transmission. Schools cannot efficiently monitor and enforce mask policies for unvaccinated children over 12. So universal masking is one of the best, safest, and most effective strategies we have. So in closing, I would hate to see any child be hospitalized or die to COVID when something as simple as wearing a mask could save their life. We all know at the end of the day, no matter what you do, there's going to be unhappy people. All I ask is, you follow the advice that I once once given? Let's check our emotions at the door, stick to the facts, or the advice of our healthcare professionals when you, when you go through your decision-making process for how you're going to keep our kids safe this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Next, Megan Curtis.
Hello, I'm Amy Curtis, and I have two kiddos. My daughter will be in 4th grade, and my son is actually starting at the Early Childhood Center this year. And I am just speaking on their behalf that masks should be mandatory, or face shields. But I believe that masks should be mandatory. In my opinion, it doesn't hurt anybody to wear masks, but it can hurt lots of people to not wear masks. My daughter does have the kidney disease and the hearing loss, and the restricted airway, and asthma, and she has no problem wearing it, my 4-year-old has no problem wearing it for her as well. And for it to be properly worked the way they're supposed to is that everybody wears them. I think that it has proven also, with as well as people did not, for kiddos, did not get sick last year by them wearing them. Not only, I think it was the COVID, you guys did a good job at making everyone wear them to where there wasn't the COVID, but also like flu and strep throat and colds were much lower in the school district. And all of these virtual kiddos deserve to be back in the school, have interactions with their peers. My daughter has missed it tremendously, and we just can't do virtual again. I had to go part-time and have lost money by helping to also take care of her and her brother, and we just, they deserve to be in the school with their peers and other teachers. I think that if maybe people have any issues with the masking, maybe they can turn to the virtual this year instead of our kiddos having to miss out on another year and a half or more. You guys did a great job last year at keeping the kiddo safe and making the best decisions for the safety and health, and not just, like others have said, you know, personal decisions. I think we need to do what's best to keep all the kiddos safe. And again, wearing masks is the best way to do that. Masks hurt no one, but wearing, but not wearing them can hurt a lot of people. And my kiddo, for one, likes the asthma, you know, a lot of people say you can't wear them because of asthma and all that, and she can't breathe, her airway is small anyways, and it's restricted, and she has asthma, and she does find wearing them when she has to. And I think that if, if you make masks a mandate, then kids like my daughter can now be back in the school district with her peers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. My apologies, I mispronounced the name, Shana Hoi.
Thank you, I'm Shana Hoi, I have a son at Memphis, who will be going into the 2nd grade. I'm here to ask you tonight to require masks at the start of the school year. I know that you are all watching the data just as we are. And so I want to take a minute to talk about my personal story. And that is that my second, going into 2nd grade kid is also currently in the Kidzone camp. And he has been masking since well before masks were required last year. It's like wearing underwear for him, he just puts them on, he doesn't mind, he wears them all day with no issue. And so on the first day of Kidzone camp, he went with his masks, and he wore them, and he came home, and he was fine. And on the morning, the next morning, day 2, we were headed in, and he, he mentioned to me about the other kids not wearing them. And I asked him about it, not one other kid was wearing a mask in his particular class, and I know they were fumbled, which was great. And so I said, you know, we talked a little bit about it, and I asked him to just still wear his mask for the 2nd day. And he did, and we talked about it the next morning, so day 3. And he said, you know, Mom, I didn't wear my mask most of yesterday because the other kids don't, and I don't want to either. And he said, I didn't get COVID, so I'm okay. And I just said, buddy, deep breath, Mom, that's not exactly how it works. And I'm just going to ask when I drop you off today that you go ahead and mask, and we'll talk about it some more. What I'm addressing here is not that he was masked and others weren't. I really wish everybody there would have been. But that some people say, well, if you want a mask, you can, but you shouldn't have to. And here's the issue. When you're 6 or 7, or maybe 11 or 15, if other people aren't doing it too, you don't feel included. You don't feel a part of, you feel different. And so he felt different. And I feel like all of the kids may have the same experience, for the ones like mine, who may choose to mask, or by their parents' backs to be masked. They may feel different, not feel included, and not choose to mask, risking their health safety because it's not mandatory, and because other kids aren't doing the same thing. So just by saying, you can choose to mask, but nobody has to, that doesn't necessarily solve the issue, because the kids then don't want to. And that's not a solution that helps keep our kids safe. And keeping our kids safe is part of our right plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoi. Next, John Tolman.
Thank you for the opportunity, my name is John Tolman. I have 3 daughters in the Liberty School District, 2 of them at Liberty North, and 1 at Heritage Middle School. One of them has asthma, and one of them has type 1 diabetes. I am also a nurse, I've been a nurse for about 14 years, and I have almost completed my training to be a nurse practitioner. I have experience in infection control, and I'd like to talk a little bit about those and our rights. Masks, I don't know if anybody remembers this, there was this whole debate back when COVID was starting, about whether or not masks work. And the woman who just spoke is correct that masks. Her son wearing a mask all by himself is ineffective. Because if I take my mask off, and I'm unvaccinated, and I'm spreading my saliva out into the air, it doesn't matter if the people around me are wearing a mask, because my spit particles travel into their eyes, and they inhale them around the side of their mask, and it gets on their clothes, and then when they take their mask off, those particles go into their face. With the Delta bond variant, if everyone is not wearing a mask, infection will happen. That is inevitable. Masks, a lot like vaccinations, only work if everyone is doing it. I know that the others, the people who are against masking are about rights. I would argue that children's rights to not be infected are probably more important than children's rights to go to school not wearing a mask. There, there's precedence for acquiring vaccination. Just today, the Kansas City Veterans Hospital is now requiring all of their employees to be vaccinated or to not come to work. We have, we do have rights, we have rights to life, to liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And the first one of those is life. Your right to be happy not wearing a mask is not more important than people's right to life and to not be infected with this deadly pathogen.
Thank you, Ms. Tolman. Next, Ashley Bro.
Hi. All right, so I'm here, I have 2 kiddos, 1 is 14 and 1 is 9. They've been in a Liberty School since they were in kindergarten. I'm also a healthcare provider in the community, so I've come basically for both reasons. First of all, thank you guys all for the hard job you've had this last year. It hasn't just been us in healthcare holding the line. I think that it's been heartwarming all year long to talk to patients and families and reassure them of how great the job Liberty was really doing, and that they were really exemplary, and not every area has been as fortunate as we have here. As a parent and a professional, it's made my job a lot easier that your job has been so well done. The hot question this year is the same as last year from a lot of families. Is it safe for my kid to return to school? Right now, I can't specifically tailor that information because we don't really know what infection measures are going to be in place. Currently in our family, you know, I have 1 unvaccinated child who's a 9-year-old. She is currently a COVID bond holder. She got COVID when she was 8, and developed a heart condition after that. Last year at the age of 34, I also had COVID, had a heart attack, and had to have a spin placed. We're both healthy young people. We did all the right things, however, we were not vaccinated at the time, and we didn't have full control of the virus. You can only do everything and still know you don't have full control. I would definitely hate for us to look back at the end of the year and have any regrets that we didn't do the right thing. At least I can look back and know that I did everything that still happened, and not have to think, well, I wish I would have done this, or I wish my child would have been in this situation so that she wouldn't still be semi-disable and suffering and not living a normal child's life. As a general statement, I can strongly suggest that all children, you know, really need to be in school. We all know it's vital, and none of us are going to argue that a child shouldn't be in school, and we should be all virtual learning. Currently, our community infection rate is, best described as high, with a pretty low full vaccination rate. That is why I think it's paramount we have infection measures in control. The CDC's laid out a bite-key prevention strategy, and if this isn't in place for staff, and school, and families beyond, we're not going to be safe. My family has not been safe, all of us are not going to be safe. This is a room full of adults speaking about children. I can give you multiple examples about adults and children who have been very affected by this that are not just statistical numbers. Not only has the CDC recommended universal indoor masking, so has A and P, so has Children's Mercy, so has anyone that specializes in pediatric. Our county health department states that does show that with our gating criteria, full mitigation measures should be in place this fall. I hope that all that data is being used as it was last year. I'm a little bit concerned about the misinterpretation of the masking policy that happened during summer school. However, I know the pressures that you're under are the same pressures that I'm under, and I think you guys are still doing the best job that you can. I would, however, be very disappointed and shocked if we didn't have full mitigation measures in place based on what's going on in our community. If we were 95% vaccinated with a 1% transition rate, there'd be no reason for any of us to be wearing masks, but that's not the case right now.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, apologies for mispronunciation, Brody Persha.
Thank you, my name is Brody Persha, I have 4 children in the school district. And I appreciate all the stories that have been shared today. I have empathy for each and every one of those folks. Those are terrible things to deal with. And to me, this isn't about freedom, it's simply about choice, right? Now, I may be wrong, but I don't see a single N95 mask here. And our good friend, the nurse, I appreciate what he said about masks, but masks cannot seal. It's impossible when you have facial hair like that. So although the masks may work, the right type of masks need to be worn, they need to be worn correctly. I've seen the kids wear the masks, they don't work. In Sweden, 39% of folks have been vaccinated. More folks in Missouri, percentage-wise, have been vaccinated. In Sweden, they had no mask policy. For the past 2 weeks in Sweden, there have been 0 COVID deaths. Okay? The vaccine at best is a therapeutic. In Israel, 2nd highest vaccine rates in all the world. The prime minister 2 weeks ago said the vaccine has been a failure. They have more cases this July than last July. And they've had stricter lockdowns and masks. See, this is, this works like the flu, there's seasonality to it. It will always be with us, we're never going to get rid of COVID. The flu strain we have today originated in 1918. The Spanish flu, it's still with us 103 years later. We haven't eradicated, we never will. And COVID is going to turn into that unfortunately as well. I appreciate the sentiments before about data, I want to share a little data as well. Do you mind if I ask a question, is that appropriate, or is that not allowed?
You can ask, we're not going to answer.
I'm just curious, if anyone knows, and as hard as this number is to say, if anyone knows how many children between last year and this year have died with COVID? Too many, I appreciate that. I'm looking at a CDC document as of July 21st. I have 337. Can anyone tell me how many kids died with pneumonia during that same timeframe? No, that's not correct, it's 819 according to the CDC. I'm just asking for consistency. If we didn't do this with pneumonia, why would we do it with COVID? Now, earlier, the American Association of Pediatric Study, which recommended wearing masks for children over the age 2, was cited. In that document, there was 0 medical citations, not a single study backing that up. There was 1 document cited. I'd encourage all of you to look at that and figure out where that document came from. Did my timer interrupt me, I thought I had more time.
No, 3 minutes, it goes quick.
Thank you.
No, appreciate it. Matt Samick.
Hi, my name is Matt Samick. I have 1 child in the, in the school district here. First of all, I would just like to commend the board for the work that they've done up until this point in terms of being one of the few school districts that were still working with a mask mandate at the end of the last school year. And a district that has and continues to offer virtual education options for, for students even into this coming school year, even if it isn't as robust as, as it was in the, in the previous year and a half. I'm just coming here to speak in support of I'm just coming here to speak in support of masking at the very least in the coming school year. Across the school for all students and educators and staff. Per the recommendation made by the American Association of Pediatrics and the CDC in relevant hotspots, which we are definitely in right now. I have personal concerns about vaccine breakthroughs. I have, my wife is, is a vulnerable population for if she were to get COVID, even though we are vaccinated in our house. And this is, this situation is also presenting the extra complications for local hospitals of overflow. Because they're so crammed up with all the COVID cases that they're dealing with right now. That stuff that usually wouldn't be serious is becoming serious. So it's a waterfall effect to things that would usually be manageable. That is because they've got, they have all these other issues popping up right now, that that's complicating the effects. I could read articles or statements about the overflowing hospitals that are happening in Southern Missouri right now. People who are being insulated regretting the fact that they didn't get a vaccination in time. But that's, that's an internal side of the point. Or tangentially relevant. But my bottom line being that I'm speaking in public support of universal masking in the schools for when the year starts up.
Thank you. Ian Coleman?
I'd like to address a topic that is relevant to the last meeting, but much of what I'm going to say, I think, is also pertinent to the comments that we've heard today. I would like to speak today about trust. I remember vividly the first day I put my daughter on an LPS bus and watched her take her away on her first bus ride to school. At that moment, I knew I was placing my trust in order to view the board, the administration, faculty, and staff at LPS to partner with me in the education of my children. Over the years, I have had reason to have the placement of that trust affirmed. Time and again, specific teachers or staff went out of their way to make sure that my children receive a high-quality education in a safe environment. An organization with a track record of great outcomes in education that LPS has established, especially in recent years, could never have achieved that high level of trustworthiness by making poor and ill-informed decisions when it comes to educational content, educational environment, and teacher training. I am confident that in the past, there have been many moments when the focus of society at large, whether that focus be on segregation, economic downturn, national disaster, terrorism, drugs, or a pandemic, has forced LPS to work fast and hard to figure out how to best engage our children in the process of learning in the midst of a changing society. You have done so by constantly seeking expertise and wisdom in equal measure. In our current times, I do not see rash, quick, ill-thought-out actions. Rather, I see evidence of this sane, balanced approach, clearly in the hiring of Dr. Dixon Seahorn. We have a person with expertise in the educational adoption of diversity and inclusion. And this is enhanced with wisdom in statements such as that of Dr. Tucker at the last meeting, where he said firmly that LPS would not engage in any educational practice that sought to shame any student. It is because I see a tried and tested approach to careful evaluation of educational systems that challenge us to think deeply about who we are as people and equally who we aspire to be. And because the weight of evidence in my children's lives and the lives of countless others I meet and deliver, suggests that this approach works and has worked for many years, that I trust you, the school board, to, and more importantly, the faculty, staff of LPS, to only teach what is helpful and educationally sound in a safe environment. Would I necessarily agree with everything of this talk? Probably not. But will my children be better off for having wrestled with difficult, thought-provoking issues and having brought them home so that we could talk about them as a family over dinner? Yes, they absolutely will. So I'm convinced that 14 years ago, when I watched my daughter disappear around the bed heading to her first day of school, I placed my trust wisely. I trust you now to make good, informed, compassionate, fact-based, and yet challenging decisions that will deepen my child's education in a safe environment.
Thank you. And Karen Botts?
I'm going to be short and sweet because I don't really want to be here. I don't think most of us really want to be here discussing masks because nobody really likes them. But it is a necessary evil. So I have four children who have gone to Liberty Public Schools. One is an adult now. And I have three others. One is going to Liberty North and the other is going to South Valley because he's special needs. And he is actually part of the disabled class. And so he's actually the reason why I'm here. I really strongly feel like masks are what keep school accessible for all children. And not having those masks will take away the right to accessible education for them. And so if we really want to talk about choice, the people who want to choose to not have a child wear a mask to protect the other children to make it accessible for all, they can choose to do virtual school now. Because my sons having to stay home are fatal.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment. Moving in through consent agenda. Section 3.01 through 3.07. Just as a reminder, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all of board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do I have a motion with regards to consent agenda items 3.01 through 3.07?
I move the board approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 3.07.
Second. Denise?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And moving into reports from the administration, starting with Innovation and Learning.
Yeah, thank you. As Dr. Moore is coming to the podium, I want to just express my gratitude to our cabinet. Over the course of this last year and even to date, their willingness to sit down with anyone on any topic and have conversations. And they have done that time and time again, as has our Board of Education members. So certainly welcome those conversations on a variety of topics. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Moore to share a little bit as to what's going on with Innovation and Learning.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. In addition to the lengthy board report we shared with you, I wanted to give you a few other updates. Liberty Virtual School planning is currently underway. As of right now, we have elementary that will, we will be providing synchronous learning. Royal schools are working on a combination. And high schools will be asynchronous coursework through Liberty Virtual and Launch. Returning student registration submissions are continuing to increase. We ask all families this year to submit addresses so that we can ensure correct communication with homes. Currently, we have about 60% of our LPS families who have submitted the information needed. Work for the one-hour early release Wednesdays continues to be refined. Plans for all teachers and support staff are being made. Again, our focus for these days is to ensure student success. This may be through looking at student evidence, talking about classroom instruction that is most effective, and how to continually be innovative in the classroom to support students academically, emotionally, and socially. And then finally, Character Trait Luncheon through Hy-Vee will return for next year. We appreciate the board's support. I do have a sign-up that Colleen Jones asked me to share with the board. So hopefully everyone can pick a day to attend. I will give this link to our phone so you can share with everyone after the meeting. With that, I will take my question.
So with 60% being registered, are we behind where we'd like to be?
Yes, so the ideal would be to have everyone have it completed by August 1st.
Yep.
But we have experienced a few pickups with the Power School server and just getting that done. And then also just making sure people have the proper paperwork to show or evidence to show, you know, where they live. And so that's taken a little bit longer. But buildings are continuing to send out information, asking parents. And then we're looking to, for buildings to, if families need support, that will provide some opportunities in the next couple of weeks for them to come in and get that support to get it completed.
Okay, good.
And those percentages continue to increase day after day.
Correct. So we were going, we were getting about 7% a week. And then we started to send some emails out over the last two weeks. And we're getting 7% to 8% a day now. So it is increasing. So this morning, we were just over 60%.
Okay, good.
Other questions of Dr. Moore? The only other thing, thank you, Dr. Moore, I would add would be in respect to kindergarten enrollment. That is something we're watching, not just locally, but also nationally. As some families held their, their student back last year. Kindergarten is a little bit more predictable, unpredictable to gauge as you think about, in a lot of ways. But as you think about the start of school in August, because those students aren't necessarily with us. Whereas in other grades, we can cohort them and move them over and have a pretty good sense of that number. The pandemic has thrown that off entirely. So we appreciate Innovation and Learning Department and many others at the building level working as we start the, the school year in August. So we'll have those numbers as we always do in September. As we land our official count, report that information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and also share that with you all in our community as far as our updated figures in enrollment for the 21-22 school year. So just wanted to add that.
Yeah, thank you.
Next then, under 4.02, our Equity Report, Dr. Dixon Seahorn.
Good evening. So glad to be here with you today to just share some additional context for the report that you received on behalf of the Office of Equity. Wanted to just kind of take you down memory lane for just a brief moment. And that is to just help you remember that the Equity Action Plan that's being reported here in terms of collective outcomes for the work that's been done this year. This work really started with Equity Talks that were held with every school leader, every director, and in the case of Human Resources and Operations at the department level. And so those conversations started last June and July. And then evolved into, by way of one question that I asked of every school leader, director, department, that was, what might be that one thing that we could tackle together in terms of an area of equity within your school, within your department, that you want to focus on? And so what you see represented here in this report would be seven areas of focus with regards to our equity, planning, and implementation this year. So the largest category being around professional learning. And so that was about 34, 34.7%. You see the collective outcomes here. And so when I reported on collective outcomes, I basically just took all of those schools or departments, which you see to the far left of the report, and just kind of captured the highlights of their work this year. So it does not mean that every single one of these schools and departments did all of these things or recorded these as outcomes of their work. But these are again, like the high-level outcomes that were achieved for this year. So professional learning being the largest category. And I think that is pretty amazing that these schools or these departments said this is what we want to focus on for this year. The second largest category being around sense of belonging and school culture. And again, you see the outcomes listed there. The third, two highest categories were around social, emotional learning and equitable access to educational programs. Each of those represented about 13%. And then the last three categories, each represented about 7%. And that was around curricular audits or content review, discipline data analysis. And then that was representation for those two entities that wanted to focus on that. So I am very happy to say that this work was accomplished in the sense of, we're not there yet, but this is what we can report on as having some evidence of the work that we're doing around equity. And this is to me pretty amazing. Because we're talking about work that has been done even in the midst of a global pandemic. And no one has allowed that to be an excuse in any way, shape, or form. But say, you know what? Mindful of the pandemic and then let's, let's pair the work we need to do with the other things that we know need to be done across the district. And the other thing that I think is pretty amazing about what's represented here is that this is work that has been enacted upon and, and work that has been evidenced by these outcomes here across the entire organization. Which is something that, to my knowledge, has never been done before here in Liberty Public Schools. So I want to say kudos to every single school leader, director, and department that said, count me in. This is important work. It's the right work to do. And let's roll up our sleeves and get it done. So that is my report for this evening. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions of Dr. Dixon Seahorn?
So just so I understood correctly, went out to each of the buildings and the departments and we said, hey, what's most important to you when we talk about equity and getting your specific area of building, department up to speed? And this is what they came back with and we tailored some efforts for them.
Absolutely. And then this also includes just me checking in, you know, over the course of the year and us having just Equity Update conversations. And so really what you see here is a reflection of the end-of-year conversations that we had. We started with Equity Talks. We ended with end-of-year reflection sessions. And so this is the outcome of those end-of discussions. And it doesn't stop here, right? We continue to work. But I thought that it would be important to report on what we've been doing for this first year in the midst of the pandemic. And again, I think it's pretty amazing work.
And both on the academic side as it relates to school, peers, principals, but then also on the operations side with our directors.
And Human Resources.
And so where do you go from here?
I think where we go from here is, as we were having the end of year reflection sessions, we talked about, is this something that you see us continuing into like more of a phase two? Almost all, absolutely yes. I see where I want to make some tweaks to my Equity Action Plan. Also, we've been talking about areas where we might conduct some audits. Just to get a little bit deeper within our respective departments and schools and continue to do the work. So the work continues from here.
So when you say audit, can you explain that just a little bit?
So an audit is, I want us to think back to the book study that we participated in. We have Belonging to a Cultural Unity. And the authors addressed the streetlight effect. Where oftentimes we look in the obvious place, right? Where the street light is shining. The audit goes beyond that space. And that's exactly the conversation we had. What might be an area, just one area, because Roma's not built in the back. But what might be one area that we haven't even considered that we might need to look into? Okay? So that's what an audit would entail. And it can be as simple or as complex as we may get and might always make as simple as possible. So probably we'll develop a template of some kind. That has not yet been done. But that is what an audit would entail. Just looking deeper into data. Data can be anecdotal. Data can be qualitative. It can be quantitative. It's just looking beyond what's obvious to the eye. And exploring that to see where some negatives may be, disparities may be in existence. So that's getting a mention.
I'm going to just ask Nick for a couple of things in this. CRT is mentioned a couple of times in this report. And I want to talk a little bit about the Community Town Hall. But I also know we have a separate agenda item for that specific thing. Would you rather we hold those questions for Andrea when we get to that section or do it now? Since it's specifically mentioned as one of her bullet points. I'm just curious what she took away from it. And again, maybe that's easier to do later. I just didn't want to lose my.
Could I address it just very briefly? You see a reference to culturally responsive instructional design and student learning experiences. That, that does not mean CRT.
Well, it says July 13th, Critical Race Theory: Understanding the Debate Webinar Hosted by a Cite Table Education Week.
So those are.
And the next one says, let's talk about community issues, CRT and DEI.
Right. Those are webinars that I attended, but that's not reflected in the actual outcomes for the Equity Action Plan.
I'm just curious what you thought about the webinar.
Oh, you, you don't know what I thought about the webinar?
Yeah. What'd you learn? What'd you hear? What do you think?
I would say it was informative. That's, that's my, my take on it. It was informative. It was just, especially the one that spoke to understanding the national debate. I think for those of us that participated, I opened it up to any school leader who wanted to listen on the session. It was, it was a good listening session to just learn what is it? What is it doing? And I think that that would be the. And I think that that would be the extent of from me in terms of reporting on what I learned. I just learned, okay, this is what it really is.
Which is what? And that's what I want to get into. Where do you think, where do you think we are as Liberty on CRT and DEI, the differences? I believe they're different.
They are. They are. So very specifically...
But I also believe there's a lot of gray area, and I'm curious just what you took from that. Again, I'm happy to wait till the rest be of the debate.
And it sounds like that webinar was getting a lay of the land in terms of the conversation that happens, that it's happening nationally.
Absolutely.
And I think we'll certainly give a recap of the listening session that was held in July locally.
Right.
There's also the conversation happening in Jefferson City with the special legislative session. The other thing that I would say is keep in mind, a lot of people are chiming in on this, both locally, but then also within organizations that we're part of. Missouri School Boards Association issued a press release. They also followed up with a press release after that legislative session back on July 19th. In addition, Governor Parsons issued a statement. In addition, Commissioner Van Devene provided testimony at that legislative hearing, right? I would argue my position, people may agree or disagree, they're uniquely different. And in fact, many were not even aware of the term Critical Race Theory, but just for this last year. And so the work that Dr. Dixon Sehorn shared as it relates to those seven themes and our principals and the directors, as I stated last month, it's absolutely diversity, equity, and inclusion work. But we've been doing that work all along, and that work is about all students, whereas some might just attribute that work to, you know, our black and brown students. It's truly about all students, and that's been our approach in terms of trying to define what it means to be learner-centered. That's the distinction. I think where oftentimes people get caught up is the terminology and the clarity around definitions of terms, whether it's equality or whether it's equity. And so we've worked, there's still a lot of room to improve, but we've worked to identify and define some of those key terms over these last couple of years, and we've made that public facing to be clear about the work that we're intending to do and that we've already begun. How we inform and educate people, we obviously need to continue to do that, but we want to be able to share the work we're doing and draw that distinction as it relates to some of the conversation happening nationally that may not be an accurate reflection of what we're doing in Liberty Public Schools. So I know we'll have a continued conversation about that later on the agenda. Does that work?
Yep.
Other questions for Dr. Dixon Sehorn before we allow her to be seated? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dixon Sehorn.
Thank you. Up next, our Finance Report.
Ms. Sullivan, she has had two busy evenings. Last night was the Audit and Finance Committee, so appreciate her and her team and the readiness for that event and the work that our committee does in getting information for our board, but we'll turn it over to Ms. Cindy.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. I have, in addition to my report, one donation to present tonight, an anonymous donation of acrylic displays, wire easels, and magazine folders valued at $1,071 donated to the Library and Equity Department. We would like to thank them for investing in our district in that manner. I also wanted to share with you tonight that as we're going through the facility master planning process, we also want to begin working on a corresponding financial plan, a basis, a vehicle to finance anything that comes as a result of that facility master plan. Mr. Anderson and I did meet with Joe Kinder of Steep Bowl, who was our district underwriter from Municipal Securities, about a week and a half ago, told him what we were thinking in the process that we were beginning, and asked him to take a look at where we stand with our debt and our capacity, and bring back to the table some scenarios that we could then have a discussion with you and work together with the facility master planning process to, as that progresses, to make sure that we're in a good place to finance anything that does come from that process. So we will provide you with more updates as that process continues, but wanted you to be aware that we had started that conversation as well. As Dr. Tucker indicated, the Audit Finance Committee did meet last night. We welcomed two fresh members onto the committee. Very happy that they were able to attend and get started. We did review the financial statements. They were also very interested in the facility's master planning process. So we will be advising Mr. Anderson to a future meeting to share the process and some of the things that we're thinking as a district so that they can be a part of that process at their request. They also will be meeting with the auditor on September 30th. That is our external audit. They do that every year in a closed session with me not present so that they can discuss anything that they wish with the external auditor that they would like me to look at during the process. So that's going very well. Very happy with that committee, and always happy to report that they did not find anything that they wanted to share with you tonight. That's all I wanted to add to my report, but I would be happy to answer any questions I do have.
It looks like G revenues are in. We're closing out the year officially.
Yes, we are.
And we were a little bit over, right, and a little bit under on revenues, or on expenses, sorry.
On expenditures, all due to COVID relief funds and decreasing expenditures holding back, not knowing what the state would, as it turned out, that was positive for us, but we still like to say not expending as much as we would have otherwise.
Got it. And Ms. Sullivan, there's been some questions within the public with regards to kind of federal funding and programming and requirements surrounding that. And I know based on the budget last month that we approved, we're sitting at, what, five percent-ish of our budget being federally funded, about 8.8 million?
Correct.
Within that, there's just a couple of buckets that I want to review just to make sure we understand the requirements of those. So we've got two big buckets that are really coming out of COVID relief funds, whether that's the American Rescue Plan or the other one, the CRRCA, is that right, those two? And we're getting somewhere around 38%, so call it three and a half million-ish. And what's kind of those requirements as we use those funds? What's the purpose of those?
So DESI has lined out the requirements that we use those for. They have a plan in place. There are anywhere from 12 to 15 things that we can use the money for. We just have to have a plan submitted to them. We have to have a return-to-learn plan placed on our district website, which we already do. And then they have to be geared toward learning loss, helping students recover from learning loss.
Yep.
And there are some engagement requirements of ensuring that parents, students, and staff, administration are engaged in those conversations.
Okay. And then we've got another big bucket, 22.6%, roughly 2 million, a little bit more, for IDEA, right, the, to give free, appropriate public education. With regards to those requirements, what are some of those key pieces that we have to put forth to use those funds?
So again, DESI tells us what we can and cannot spend those on, but a student, we have to spend those on students who have a known disability, which results from testing and writing up of an individual education plan. And then those monies are used to support that student in any way that they need to ensure that they have an appropriate education.
Okay, perfect. And then two other big buckets focusing on, really, food, for lack of a better term. School lunch, school breakfast, counting for, call it 20%, again, roughly around 2 million and a little bit more than that. Funds for that, how does that come into play as far as getting those federal funds?
Nutrition services funding is on a reimbursement basis. So after the fact, after we have spent on food commodities, we submit or afford to the school nutrition services through DESI, and then they reimburse us based on the lunch prices that we charge. This year, there will not be any charges, though they just reimburse us for the food costs of the commodity.
Okay, okay. So accurate to say that within the federal funds, we're not being reimbursed based on using specific curriculum within our district to get those funds?
That's correct. DESI has not told us why we have to teach in that regard.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions for Ms. Sullivan while we have her? Okay. Thank you.
Moving into the Operations Report, 4.04.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Just a couple items to add on to the two reports that are uploaded on Board Docs. First, facility master planning. We've presented a little bit on this over the past couple months, and Ms. Sullivan just referenced it. We are in of step, five steps of the process. We are now in step two, and really this is the data collection phase, and we're engaging folks at the building level. We're surveying folks at the building level and really kind of beginning the process of evaluating space. We'll soon pivot in September to developing planning criteria. For those who were around last, around in '18, that's just establishing kind of the framework for which to build a plan upon, what are the important priorities of the district. And then from there, as we go into October, we will kind of get into the establishment and looking at projects and prioritization of the criteria and so forth. There'll be surveys that will open in there. There will be opportunities to engage the public, but this is just the very beginning of that point where this becomes much more evident and obvious to the community, so I just wanted to share that with all of you. As part of that work, we also will be updating the Demarcus Report. We did that last year, and with all the uncertainties from last year, we agreed to bring them on per the contract that we had with them to go ahead and do an update to that plan. The second item I wanted to highlight is just the return-to-learn plan and planning process that we're in the midst of as I speak here tonight. One of the first, there's much work going on behind the scenes. We have our internal planning committee that meets regularly. Obviously, all senior staff is highly engaged on readying up for the start in fall. And one of the next steps to come out of this process, we'll have the staff and students or family survey that goes out potentially as early as tomorrow, if not the following day. And that's an opportunity to engage our families and staff in terms of how they're generally feeling about kind of where we are and where we're headed. So that will go out, and there'll be a window of time before we'll get those results back in and then begin to evaluate. I think one important point, and I think there was some misunderstanding in the last go-round, this is a survey. It's not really a poll. It's not a vote. I think it's just for context and really for an opportunity for our community to provide some input in and around kind of the work we've done and then the work that lies ahead. In addition, the actual plan itself, I'm just going to run through a few things just to kind of get it on your radar. First of all, beginning of August, it's just around the corner. We anticipate to share, that we will be sharing, kind of the updated return-to-learn plan for the fall, that first week of August, so it's just around the corner. One of the reasons that it's not yet out is we're working and having conversations with local public health officials, kind of watching and monitoring their work. They're also having conversations and working with other officials as they coordinate a response, hopefully regionally, in terms of guidance in and around mitigation efforts in the holding of school come fall. So there's a lot of pieces to that, but I think we're, everything's lined up as it needs to be, but we'll be pulling together the plan here over the next couple of weeks. But much of the framework has already been established. One of the very few upsides is we've been here, so we've kind of worked the plan and developed the plan from last year. I think that sets us up for a high-level success. The overarching goal for the plan this year, I think maybe just a little bit different from previous years, is really to provide five-day-per-week in-person learning for all of our students who prefer this learning model, while also continuing the Liberty Virtual School program. So we're really going to do our best to honor distancing and put a plan in place that allows those who want five-day in-person learning that they can have that option. We will also, of course, be preparing various scenarios that would allow us to pivot to virtual learning, either for individuals dependent upon contract tracing efforts, or potentially a full class, a full building, or obviously the potential of the district as a whole. So a lot of that is just building in scenarios of what that looks like, how we can pivot, and the folks in academic services can make that move seamlessly. Mitigation practices, we heard a lot about that tonight. That's obviously a really core part of this work, and so we're continuing to evaluate options on how best to kind of put that in place. And then lastly, I just did want to highlight this, the contact tracing. I think for most of the folks here understand, that was really probably one of the more stressful and involved added work elements from this past year for our staff and our teams across the district, and it was extremely cumbersome, because we had to go in and begin that tracing process, the identification, the tracking, and followings, the guidance that's provided. So we are kind of refreshing the work that we did last year and correcting for some things and simplifying some things that we can. Had a very good conversation with Clay County Public Health about maybe how they can be a little bit more actively involved in that work, which will, of course, lessen the burden on our team. So I've been encouraged by that, but I also realize that that is, that is one of the big variables in this entire process. One last point, and that is, I think I mentioned this last month, we are pretty sure we're going to no longer do the testing clinic over here next to Liberty High School. Part of that is because tests are readily available and free of charge across the metro. We are looking at an option where we have take-home tests that we will have at the buildings to provide to staff or students that may be experiencing symptoms, maybe help them along, but let them get home and then do the self-testing and report out from there. So just wanted to let you know that that was in the works, but very likely.
And to clarify, that's a saliva test, not a swab?
This is a swab test. The saliva test is, unfortunately, it still requires the mailing out, and it's a little bit more involved, but yes.
Other questions of Mr. Anderson?
No, I know we're in the midst of big hiring for transportation, nutrition services. How's that going? How are we feeling about candidates?
It's going. I think it is a little troubling, and I, you know, as we bring folks on, we lose folks. And so, you know, we're active in conversations in and around them, what we can do to help kind of drive that through. But we'll have a plan, right?
Yep.
And I think we, we will need to exert a little more energies in that space, but I'm sensing this is a problem we're going to have for a little while, and we have to transport our students.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Anderson?
Just a quick question. Heritage Field, is it going to be done on time? I keep looking at it and...
Good question. We ran into a couple bumps in the road.
Is that called weather?
No, not weather. It was delayed material. That it looked like we were all set, and then we had kind of an oh, by the way memo. So we pushed back on that. I think right now as it stands, there, we're estimating that that work will be done by the, by the end of the first week of school. But we do believe that, and we're working on that to see if we can kind of influence that work a little bit to speed that up, so it's be ready by the first day of school. Of course, there'll be challenges if there's any sort of instruction occurring. When school starts, because they've laid down all of that stuff in that space in the parking lot, so that's another motivator that I think will help us.
Yeah, without that parking lot, there is no parking at that school. Just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Moving into our Human Resources Report.
Dr. Vogel, on?
The Human Resources Report has been uploaded. I'm going to highlight a few items out of that and the daily questions that you have. With regard to the departmental updates, we've had 62 separations among our faculty and staff, so primarily teachers, counselors, librarians. We filled 61 of those positions, so we're closing that gap. As you can imagine, and for those who've been on the board for quite a while, this is a moving target. Some of those things happen, life happens. We have spousal transfers and things like that that do extend those openings. We also have a close watch on changes in student numbers. So as sections begin to grow, particularly at the elementary level, we may add teachers to those ranks to manage student numbers there as well. So you'll probably likely continue to see through the summer that number somewhere under 100%, but even though it's a moving target, our teams are working very, very well and very effective in getting those positions filled and those gaps closed. The other thing I wanted to draw out is with regard to the wellness premium differential. You see that in the report, about 66.5% of our employees are choosing to participate, which qualifies them for a waiver of $600 that would normally be applied to their premiums. For those that don't participate in that, that number seems low, and if you look specifically at the completed HRA, HRA is our Health Risk Assessment, compared to those who've achieved 2,000 points, those are the two components to belong, the percent completed of the HRA is much smaller. That's due in large part to the fact that we didn't do onsite screenings. We typically do that every year with COVID. We did not do that. The Health Risk Assessment was always completed in tandem with those onsite screenings, so participation levels are high when the screening is there. The Health Risk Assessment is a part of that, so you see that number quite a bit higher typically, or at least closer to the average points achieved by employee. But when you look overall, 66.5% is actually up from where we were at this time last year. And so we're convinced that the rate of participation in the premium differential program will continue to be where it is this year. This year, it was over 99% participation rates. So we anticipate that the work of Rebecca Fisher and others who will call and reach out to employees and help them get across the finish line as those want to participate will get those numbers up to that level as well. And then the final thing I wanted to draw is with regards to Team Liberty. And Board of Education has historically been a very strong partner with the work of Team Liberty and the input that we gathered with regard to insurance benefits, compensation, quality of work-life issues. So the dates are included. These are alternative dates as of right now. We'll be meeting on September 8th, and it's usually in that meeting that we finalize the dates for the year. Any of these dates that change, of course, we will update all of you as well. You'll notice in the dates, they're very front-loaded and very quickly, Team Liberty takes on the information from our insurance utilization, the impact that it's going to have on our insurance renewal. And all of that is because we need to get a recommendation to Dr. Tucker regarding the renewal so that he has time to formulate a recommendation and present to you in the September board meeting so that you can take action in the October board meeting, which allows us to stay on pace with our open enrollment window. So those dates are pretty tightly front-loaded in September. So on behalf of everybody that sits on Team Liberty, Cindy Sullivan and her work and partnership with me, we thank you for your strong support of Team Liberty. It's a system that works. The people who pour themselves into that work appreciate the fact that the Board of Education puts a lot of stock in their work and their labor and their time investment. So thank you. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have on the HRA report.
So we have our third cohort going into the Grow Your Own, correct?
We do, yeah.
Amazing.
Yeah. So our junior class now, our first cohort is junior class, so we're very close to returning to us, so.
And have all of them, have all of them stayed within that program or have any left the program?
We had one. We did change majors, and so there's a repayment. Basically, it becomes a loan instead of a loan forgiveness program, it becomes a loan. And so there's a payback process, and our team's working with college and university where those payments are made to recover that, so.
Nice.
All are still with it. Go on.
That's a nice percentage.
Yeah. Looking forward to having them come back.
Just a comment or thankfulness for the team and you as well for getting those certificated positions filled. I mean, that's a huge, to be down to just one open. Kudos. It's great.
Yeah, pass the mic.
Other questions of Dr. Vogelar? Thank you.
Moving into 4.06, superintendent's report.
Just a few highlights to share in respect to my submission this evening. Just appreciate Dallas Ackerman and Lynn Martin for the help that they provide in publishing our LPS educator. There's a lot of work that goes into that in terms of preparing content, and we are ready for our back-to-school edition that will hit mailboxes here shortly. Really highlighting a couple of things. As you will recall, over the course of the last three years, we've been in the process of revisiting, revising our strategic plan that then culminated in three pieces, the vivid vision, our graduate profile, as well as our strategic plan. A little bit of an interruption as it relates to the pandemic. And so we feel a desire to kind of re-submit or push out those items to our community as we emerge from the pandemic, and we were able to really focus on the work within our strategic plan. Again, our vivid vision is our narrative as it relates to the future that we aspire toward. The graduate profile is informed by community input in and around five key areas, and those skills and dispositions that we believe our graduates need upon completion from high school, culminating in real-world learning experiences. And then lastly, our strategic plan steers our work. One of the things that's notable is our move toward having a more agile, flexible plan as we've done the last couple of years in bringing revisions to you, and so we look forward to doing that later this fall, celebrating the work that's been done even throughout the pandemic, but then also at the same time identifying what are those needs moving forward that reflect the supports and the needs of our students and how we want to intervene. And so we look forward to sharing more of that information with you later this fall. In addition, the start of the school year is just around the corner with Epic Elementary beginning on August 10th, and then the remaining schools in Liberty beginning on August 24th. Prior to that, when we return in July at our board meeting, it typically starts picking up. Several of our administrators attend our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education annual conference. We'll be doing that next week, followed by important events like our New Teacher Innovation Institute, where we will be welcoming close to, I believe, 86 or so new teachers to our system. If you'll remember last year, we had a lot of late hires that didn't get an opportunity to participate in our New Teacher Innovation Institute. Those that are returning to us for this school year will also be welcome to participate in that. We also will be having our convocations, slightly different. We'll be pushing it out virtually as we did last year with some onsite visits to each of our campuses and departments, not just giving them an update, but then also honoring our certificated and support staff for their years of service. We also have a variety of professional development offerings during those few days leading up to the start of school. And then as Dr. Moore shared earlier, our principals and leadership teams at building levels are in the process of mapping out the year as it relates to work within their professional learning communities and how we leverage our early release time on, from week to week. The other thing I wanted to share is that I attended the Legislative Advocacy Conference in Washington, DC two weeks ago. And as was relayed in part of the Q and A with Mrs. Sullivan, the areas that we were working with our Missouri delegation in Washington, DC on included the American Rescue Plan and its implications. It's not too often that you're able to travel to Washington, DC and thank legislators for additional funding. So this was a little bit different, but part of our messaging was also about thinking forward two, three, four years ahead when those revenues cease to exist. And so potentially, we increase revenue streams for a period of time, but then not wanting to revert back to pre-pandemic levels of funding. And so that's a caution. And so districts are navigating how they utilize those dollars with the help of their states and Department of Education. Topics covered beyond the American Rescue Plan included school infrastructure needs across the state of Missouri, not just within Liberty Public Schools, reauthorization tied to child nutrition services and funding. They're working at finalizing budget appropriations in that budget process that impacts fiscal year '22, fully funding the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and that's a concern in that we will have kind of these stimulus funds kind of seek in or kind of seep into supporting school districts and students with special needs, but then we know that those will eventually go away. So not wanting to revert backward, as I shared. And then lastly, the Emergency Connectivity Fund as it relates to access to bandwidth and broadband across districts across Missouri and our country. So we had great conversations with either our senators or representatives or their office staffs, always appreciate the opportunity to visit and talk with our legislators. Last thing that I would share, just to reiterate what Mr. Anderson spoke to in terms of our return to learn plan, additional collaboration between those health departments that he mentioned with cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City, our school districts on the Missouri side, on the Kansas side, in and around how they are approaching and how they are planning. And so we're in constant contact with them as well as contact with a variety of medical officials. So we look forward to sharing more information as those return to learn plans are finalized. So with that said, would certainly entertain any questions you all have of me.
Has IDEA ever been fully funded?
No.
Okay, just checking.
It, I think the highest percentage that I heard the other day that it's been funded at is at about 18% of their commitment.
Okay.
And so as we think about the ARP revenue streams being pushed forward, that percentage will likely go up. It typically hovers around 13% in terms of its actual commitment and federal funding. So how can we leverage the influx of revenue to support kids, but then also kind of leverage it to continue to increase those dollars? Time will tell.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
You did not.
Okay.
That will conclude Section 4, reports from the administration. Moving into Section 5, unfinished business. One item under here, diversity, equity, and inclusion RFP.
Yeah, thank you. As is our process in presenting recommendations or proposals for the board, we work through a two-read process where we introduce it on an initial read and provide opportunity to provide feedback, questions, clarification over the course of one meeting to the next, and then we circle back around at that second meeting, usually a month later, to be able to answer questions, provide additional information for you. So we've been in the process of working through this RFP since April, as you are all aware. Solicited responses or proposals from a variety of groups. We had 10 service providers fulfill that deadline in April. At that point, we were on a trajectory to really wrap that up through two reads, no later than June, into where we've pushed that a little bit further, just in an effort to do our due diligence. So I appreciate Dr. Westfall, Dr. Dixon Sehorn, in providing the recap of the presentation at our meeting in June as to where we stand with our recommendation for the Core Collaborative. As you will recall, that is reflective of the book study that we did over the course of this last year belonging to a culture of dignity. So we have some level of familiarity with their content in terms of having conducted that book study. With that said, we're ready for this evening to bring forward for your consideration upon second read, entering into a contract with Core Collaborative to be able to facilitate our professional development as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. As Dr. Dixon Sehorn shared earlier, this allows us to be able to continue to build capacity among our leaders, whether it's at the building level, the departmental level, the cabinet level, and even for our Board of Education as we participate in these conversations that are critically important in service to all students. So it certainly submit that to you this evening for your consideration.
Entertained a motion?
I move the board approve the recommendation of the RFP committee and enter into an agreement with the Core Collaborative for professional development services.
Second. Any discussion? Denise, call the role, please.
Scott?
No.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Motion carries, right Denise? Thank you. Moving into new business, 6.01, two policies for revision.
So these policies are presented to you this evening for first read. We'll have an opportunity next month to be able to bring those back for your consideration. Certainly would welcome any questions or clarification between now and then. Policy JHCD tied to administration of medications to students, and then KLA, concerns and complaints regarding federal programs. So we'll have more to come on this particular topic as we approach our August regular monthly meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
These are just standard updates from those MSBA, is that?
That is correct, yeah.
Customization?
Surprisingly, they're limited as compared to other policy updates we've had in previous months. So just the two.
Instead of 20?
We've had few in the past.
6.02, moving into an item that was pulled from consent agenda.
Yeah, as we've done periodically as it relates to board member reimbursement, several of us attended the Missouri School Boards Association Igniting Grade Ideas Conference back in, I believe it was June. We had several presentations. The items removed include a reimbursement check, 706-961, to Mr. Nick Bartlow for $48. So we'd present that to you this evening for your consideration.
I move the board approve check number 706-961 to Nick Bartlow for $48 for reimbursement of expenses at the MSBA conference.
Second. Denise?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Abstain. Final part of new business, 6.03, under contracts and purchases.
We do have several of these items that we wanted to share with you this evening. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to provide a little bit of a background on each.
Thank you. Yeah, there are a few items on here that were, over the course of the month, were authorized under our emergency purchases and actions policy DJF1, first being a contract with Blackboard. And that was really to allow for some expedited work related to some updated versions of Power School and parent looking, getting ready for the start of school, and really weren't in a position to hold off until this meeting. So we did expedite that contract. There also was a couple repairs associated, actually with this building at the DAC, both related to HVAC, one with Hale Mechanical, the other with P1 Group. We also had to extend a contract to train with respect to some air condition work at Liberty North. And then we've had some work also at Alexander Donofin, where we had to bring in a couple contractors to help us with some work as we're ready for the start of school this fall. And be happy to take any questions.
So, I mean, that's a big number on Alexander Donofin, right?
It certainly is, yes.
And I hate to put you on the spot, what is air quality remediation?
Well, it's part of the work in cleaning up and readying for some carpet replacement. We always do some standardized asbestos, kind of, that's just part of what we do. And sometimes we encounter more of that. Sometimes we encounter mold, sometimes associated with that. So it was just kind of a cleaning up process. But all that was only exposed as part of the work that we were doing to ready for the start of school.
Yep.
So you just found it?
Well, I guess we kind of know, it's not unusual for our buildings that this pops up, but again, it's all encapsulated, especially asbestos.
But it did just pop up?
It did.
You didn't know about it a month ago?
Correct. Probably, yeah, correct. It's probably time for me to first learn.
But again, if it's gone undisturbed, then it's not an issue. It's at the process of doing work that if it's disturbed, then you have to go in and remove it and go through that process, which does again become pretty expensive.
And then full carpet replacement and ceiling tile. And there was some mold that we discovered too as part of this process that was definitely part of this work. And so it's just a matter of kind of taking care of everything that's there. It was a pretty expensive project for us.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move the board approve the emergency purchases listed in the agreement with Blackboard.
Second. And Denise, call the role, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Moving into Section 7, Board of Education, starting first with legislation advocacy, 7.01.
I have nothing new yet. We have a meeting, webinar to look at what is coming down the pike and what we are going to be looking at education-wise. I don't have anything new right now.
And you are officially in your new position?
I am officially in whatever that position is called, that I can't come up with. Some kind of organizing thing.
They will likely begin those legislative session conversations, though, at the MSBA conference this fall.
Yes.
That then precludes the spring of 2022 session.
Yeah.
That's typically when they introduce ideas and things that are forthcoming.
And the conference isn't until November this year.
A little later.
But they are already looking at what's heading.
And probably somewhat filtering into a little bit of the conversation on 7.02, I'm thinking of the July 19th state hearing regards to a handful of things, primarily around CRT, I believe. And then 7.02 here, just a conversation we wanted to bring forward with regards to the listening session that Representative Ritchie held primarily in conjunction with Representative Brown and Horvort on CRT and DEI curriculum listening session. I guess this was almost three weeks ago now-ish. First off, I want to thank Dr. Dixon Sehorn and Dr. Westfall for attending and representing Liberty Public Schools in that conversation, being a part of that. Dr. Westfall being up on the stage and willing to answer questions as it came up. So we certainly appreciate that. I do think as the conversation happened and it went, it was truly set up as a listening session to encourage dialogue. I know that a handful of individuals were brought in for their expertise to help facilitate with a couple of different organizations. And as I attended on, as a part of it, both as just a citizen as well as understanding the conversation from a board perspective around CRT and DEI, I will say it began to be quite one-sided and a lot of conversation... be quite one-sided and a lot of conversation with regards to anti-CRT and trying to link that to a handful of other items, much like DEI, which I know we, at least me personally, separate the two between CRT and DEI as two separate things. But a lot of conversation, both sides, as they talked about it, it really was a Northland conversation. So I know there were representatives from Park Hill, North Kansas City, Liberty, Carney, Excelsior, Smithville. I will say a lot of the constituents who spoke from an LPS standpoint, we have heard from both in public comment as well as having conversations privately. I think it was probably about 75, 25%, focused on wanting to continue work proactively with DEI. The other side focused on speaking out against CRT in that effort. And then I think at the end of the three hours after the listening session, each of the panelists were allowed to kind of speak about it, whether that be from the districts themselves, or the legislators, or the individual experts who were brought in for the conversation. So yeah, I just wanted to bring that forward. I know there was some conversation had with regards to it and wanted to make sure that it was there. Any questions, comments, et cetera, with regards to that listening session?
I guess it's my turn now. As maybe all of you know by now, I don't know, I know Nick knows, Jeremy knows, when I asked for this to be put on the agenda, and I appreciate it being placed on the agenda. My concern bleeds into 7.04 a little bit here, so I'm trying not to, I'm trying not to skip agenda items here, but my biggest concern was that we all received an email from Nick outlining, in his own words, what his opinions were on this evening and what we might expect coming down the road for the district. In my humble opinion, I believe that should be done in a public meeting. I do not believe we should be sending each other emails to the entire board. Obviously, Sunshine Law allows me to talk to A.J. if I want to, or even A.J. and Andy, but as soon as I talk to A.J., Andy, and Drew, I've got to worry about Sunshine Law. And Sunshine Law is there for a reason, and I, we talked about it all week long last week, and I was told by the district's attorneys and MSBA that that absolutely was not a violation of Sunshine Law. I will tell you, I'm not convinced that's right. I do believe that our attorneys are there to protect our district and our board members, and the MSBA is there to protect board members. I believe we've got a Sunshine issue there. And I'm kind of like, I was very upset last week. Nick and I talked through it, and I talked to Tom about it. And then today, we all got another note from Nick, breaking apart Representative Ritchie's response, left out a couple of sentences, which are no big deal. The reason I know this is because Representative Ritchie sent me the response last week. And then we got it six days later, another note from Nick to the entire board, as if to say, "Don't care what your practices have always been, I'll keep sending these as long as I want." And I have a problem with that. I have a problem for, I was president of the board a thousand years ago, okay, from 2012 to 2014. I don't think I ever did that. David Evans was president for the next three years. I don't think he ever did that. And it was Andy for two, it was Tim Ray for one. I don't think anybody ever did that. If we have something discussed, we're a public body, we're a public organization, we should be doing it here in front of cameras, in front of people that want to attend, and in front of people that want to watch the video. In my opinion, we should not be sending emails to each other or texts. We've had, in the last couple of months, this is all kind of coming to a head for me, and that the last four months, Nick, since you took over, I'm getting emails to the entire board from the president, we're getting texts sent to all board members about the 1619 project, we're getting, and I'm going, what is happening here? We have, this has not been the way we've conducted business for the 12 years I've been on here. You want to keep doing it that way? That's fine. I don't make the rules for the board. But I think it's a problem. I think this is an issue. I think the fact that Nick's initial letter to all of us, which could easily be made public, I don't, I wouldn't withhold sending it to anybody, basically said, and I'm paraphrasing, so correct me if this is wrong, "Me and Republicans wouldn't let any of the Democrats respond, and we all should know about that. Maybe we're going to have an audit from the state coming up in a few months. We should be aware of that." These are things that should not, we should not be, these are not closed item issues, closed session issues. These things should be out in public for everybody to hear and comment on. You want to comment on them in public comment? Fine, you want to tell me I'm in, whatever, I've been calling a lot of names in 12 years, okay? So, but that's what, our job is a public job. We have to be public-facing and not doing this. And I wasn't, you know, sometimes I get talked off the ledge on this kind of stuff, and then today I get another one from Nick, basically saying, "I'm going to do this anytime I want to." I think it's a problem. I think it was misrepresenting what happened to be a Republican legislature that volunteered to go into a pretty hostile environment and listen to a bunch of people, as if he's supposed to invite X number of Democrats from the other side to argue with him. I just don't understand it. I don't, it's never been done before, I'm not used to it, and I think it's wrong. In the board communication section, I'm going to propose that if this is not a Sunshine violation, then should we as a body make some rules for ourselves so that I'm not sending the board what I think on something? Because what does happen, if somebody responds, I've asked this question of the board secretary, and she's on vacation. Did anybody respond to those messages? Because now you're really getting into Sunshine problems when you're creating a discussion. So just don't do it. You just don't, you just, if you've got something to say, you say it in public, you say it right in front of the TVs. We haven't, we've done work sessions that aren't televised, but they're still open to the public, anybody can come, the newspaper can see us, and that's when those things should be done. So my proposal for 7.04 is to look at our own board policy around how this is done, but I just wanted to give a little context and what the board knew, what happened last week, where I stand on this, and what I think we should be doing going forward, so.
So, two items in response to your comments. Did I leave something out that Representative Ritchie responded to me with? Yes. Feel free to call me with his mobile number. I don't think that was appropriate to send to everybody. We can sit down for coffee and talk. That's what I left out. And if you think there's more that's left out, then you may have received a different note.
Okay.
Secondarily, you're equating Republicans with anti-CRT and Democrats with pro-DEI, which I think is an oversimplification of the conversation. As what you've just said, you said, "Let Republicans speak and Democrats weren't allowed to speak." Well, in my note, I never said anything about Republicans and Democrats.
You said Ritchie, Horvort, only Republicans invited and no Democrats invited.
I said Republicans were there.
You made it a blue and red issue.
I did not, Scott.
Didn't you say that in your note?
That's what you, that's what you're inferring from this conversation.
How come Representative Ritchie responded like he did by saying, "The only reason Democrats or somebody from this side of the aisle wasn't invited is because of notes and systems."
I don't know. If you would like me to read the exact statement that I provided to the board, I'll be happy to do that, and you will note that there is nothing from a Democrat standpoint.
You are reading the note, Mike?
Sure. As you may be aware, Representatives Doug Ritchie, along with Representatives Chris Brown and Representative Josh Horvort, hosted a CRT and DEI curriculum listening session at Providence Baptist Church on Tuesday evening. The event was billed as an event to encourage dialogue regarding CRT, DEI, and critical pedagogy between parents, educational advocates, school administrators, and state officials. That's in quotes. Representative Ritchie brought in Jessica Laurent with Missouri Prosper to help facilitate. Ms. Laurent states that Missouri Prosper promotes cultural exchange and opportunities for conversation around community topics. "We're excited to help Northland families facilitate a transparent and respectful conversation on a subject that has swept the community and nation this past year." Also in attendance were Dr. Mary Byrne and Cecilia Johnson, of which I provided their biographies via link. I state, "I attended a listening session on behalf of our board to hear what our community has to say about CRT and DEI. Dr. Westfall participated in the panel, as Dr. Tucker was on a previously planned trip, and Dr. Dixon Sehorn was also in attendance. I estimate there were about 200 people in the church. I want to provide you with my initial opinion and thoughts with regards to the listening session. Our Representative Ritchie set the evening as an opportunity to hear from constituents. Ms. Laurent was the first to speak. She started the evening by attacking school districts. She began with a statement, 'Losing is not an option,' with regards to CRT and curriculum. She definitively stated that school districts are teaching CRT in classrooms. She said that school districts are using language like diversity, inclusion, and bias to mask the reality that they are teaching CRT. She used test data from several district websites, including LPS, to build her point that our districts are failing students with no context on the data and what it represented. She said that diversity is fine and equality is not equity." That set the tone for the evening. We had roughly three hours of questions from parents across the Northland, Park Hill, North Kansas City, LPS, Carney, Excelsior, and Smithville. Many of the LPS constituents who spoke have reached out to us before with concerns about CRT and other issues, provided their names, Mary Hill, Megan Nielsen, Natalie Scholl, Tanya Johnson. While 80% of those asking questions were focused on CRT and DEI work, the remaining 25% were focused on the importance of DEI work. The evening was heated and full of tension. One particular instance of profanity laced tirade against Representative Brown, as he voiced his support of DEI work sticks out in my memory. As I previously took notes, I recognize that every time someone spoke up on the importance of DEI work, Representative Ritchie allowed the three women he invited to speak out against their points. Every time someone spoke against CRT and DEI, he didn't allow feedback from the panel.
There it is.
That's a statement.
Right.
At the end of the three hours, at the end of the three hours, at the end of the three hours, each of the panelists were allowed to provide comments, starting with the school administrators.
You're going to skip over that?
What? Are you asking me to read it, or do you want to sit here and converse with it?
No, I'm asking you to respond to what you just said, that you weren't calling those two sides out. But yeah, you just said, "Representative Ritchie allowed the three women invited to speak out against their points."
Correct.
"Every time someone spoke against CRT and DEI, he didn't allow feedback from the panel."
That's a fact-based statement.
Okay. So we're just supposed to glean from that that, okay?
I mean, that's your call. You can interpret that how you like, you can go back.
I think everybody interpreted that how I'm.
That's fine. In the three hours, each of the panelists were allowed to provide comments, starting with the school administrators. Legislators went second, three women invited by Representative Ritchie went last. School administrators were thanked for being there, as listening sessions being held across the state have not had any previously. Hopefully, that provides you with a glimpse of what I personally took away from the event. I have five pages of notes, happy to discuss further, but wanted to provide the following key takeaways. Felt less like a listening session, more like a validation of the beliefs that Representative Ritchie already has. I'll give you this one, Democratic legislators of the Northland were not invited, again, my personal opinions. There were no panelists who, as I stated, there were no panelists who would serve as experts on the side, other side of the experts in attendance. I was disappointed to see that it was not a true listening session. CRT equals DEI to this group of individuals fighting against CRT. They all believe CRT is being taught in our schools, if not overtly, then covertly. Believe that each district's PD efforts surrounding DEI is a form of CRT training. They believe that districts use language to mask teaching CRT to students. While language is being used covertly in their eyes, they take particular issue with the term equity, vehemently against any equity yet support equality, in favor of everyone having an equal amount, not in favor of providing the right amount of resources based on the student's need to achieve a fair outcome. And I do anticipate that we can expect some sort of audit being pursued of our school district in the near future. There are comments from Dr. Byrne that DESI needs to be audited and every penny accounted for, as she contends they are taking money from CRT proponents. If this is happening with DESI, we should be prepared that it will happen with us. Again, happy to discuss further with you about additional questions. And, this was copied to our facilitator of records, Sandra, and so, under Sunshine Law, that's a legit thing that I can send to the board. Everybody was buying carbon copy. If you wanted to make the board in a conversation, you would have had to add them all into the two-line and have a conversation in that way.
And that, I appreciate that. I think that's one of the things you've got to do, and we've got to be careful behind the scenes.
And I will also say that as this happened three weeks ago, would you want to wait until now to hear those conversations and what happened, knowing that that is a hot-button issue in our community today and everybody wants to understand likely?
Well, let me ask you this. You got Representative Ritchie's response a week ago, and you just sent it to us today.
Sent it to you yesterday.
Can you ask, you tell me?
I sent it to you yesterday.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter.
So one, we need to worry about it immediately, but the other one can wait a week because it's a response. Am I wrong?
I will, you are wrong, but that's.
It's literally dated that way.
But it's your opinion, man. You're going to do what you want to do with this conversation. So if you want to take it down that road, take it down that road.
Well, you just said what I wanted to wait.
I, I don't know.
But you're allowed to wait before you gave us Representative Ritchie's response.
I asked Representative Ritchie if he would be comfortable with me sending it to the board. That took a day. I have a job, I have a family. I don't check my personal email all the time, which is where I communicated with Representative Ritchie.
Okay, so what you're saying is, we need to immediately know what happened in that meeting, from your opinion and from your angle.
I do.
But it was okay to slow roll the response from Representative Ritchie because it probably wasn't as important.
I mean, I'm happy to read that, too.
That's how I interpret it, because that's what happened.
Well, that's your opinion, Scott, and you're welcome to.
It's not like England, it's dated that way.
You're welcome to your opinion. I will read Representative Ritchie's response again. This is public record. "Board members followed up with Representative Ritchie after the CRT and DEI curriculum listening session with a handful of questions. He followed up this past week with responses. I felt it would be beneficial to share those with you. Representative Ritchie did agree that I could share the information he provided. With regards to only Republican legislators being at the listening session, he stated, 'In his email, the listening session itself was coordinated to be a listening session. I invited Representatives Horvort and Brown because parents asked me to invite them. No one asked for additional legislators. My working relationship with other Clay County representatives is positive, and I would have had no problem with inviting them. That said, we do not expect invitations from one another. Should any representative in the Northland coordinate a listening session, I would not expect to participate. These sessions are for our benefit and hearing from our constituents. With regards to third-party participation, specifically the MoProsper organization, as for the participation of MoProsper, parents requested their participation. They wanted to have someone available to answer technical questions regarding the history and application of CRT in the education space. In addition, MoProsper is a new group that was formed by Mo parents that are concerned about the issue. My role on the Joint Education Committee motivated them to engage me as well. I made it clear to them that this was a listening session and not a breakout session on CRT. Once the event began, it became clear they forgot my instruction. You will remember the instances that I drew attention back to those in the audience that were there to speak. I did so because that was the purpose for which we were in attendance. I do regret the way they interacted with the audience. I am used to working with professional entities that respect etiquette and professionalism. I, we encountered something other than that. I have conducted a follow-up conversation with MoProsper regarding their engagement. They mentioned that if needed, they'll issue a letter of apology. And then the additional note provided in his response, "I was there to listen, not to correct. I invited administrators so they could do the same. Several administrators were uncomfortable with having to engage on this topic, so I worked to protect them from having to directly field questions. They knew that to the degree they felt comfortable in answering questions, they could do so." Again, I provided his response because I felt it was important, based on your conversation, that, you know, it's one-sided, so let me give you Representative Ritchie's response to it. And the other piece of it, that I'm not quite sure where you're headed with this, is you've stated that since I've taken control, you have two instances of where we're out of control, one being a communication, a text on a 1619 project, which came from.
Did I say we're out of control?
You said, "Since it's come on."
I have these, there's four things that have happened that I have concerns about. I don't know where we're headed.
What are the four, what are the four things? I mean, we're talking about a 1619 project text that was sent to, I guess, the entire board, and then you've got these two instances of emails with regards to the CRT/DEI listening session.
Had a resolution ready to be stamped by the board with, given public dollars to a private entity that we had to pull.
Which that was.
If I had pulled it, it wouldn't have been pulled.
Well, and that was provided in a Friday update, which is quite clear that you did not read, because that had been provided.
Come on.
I'm telling you, man, if we're talking about participating in the board.
It was Friday update that said, "We're going to have this on the Tuesday agenda."
I believe it was a couple of weeks ahead of that.
Okay, so I pulled it before the meeting started. So you wanted me to just pull it earlier? Is that your complaint?
The conversation, the conversation should have happened with the Friday update, right?
So did I, who pulled it?
We pulled it based on your conversation of not being ready.
Who requested it be pulled?
I don't know.
It was me, and you know it.
I have, that's fair, that's you.
On that note, that was an administrative conversation as to posting that item on the agenda and then ensuring that it was included--
But who pulled it?
Including--
I told you.
Correct, you did. Sandra pulled it off the agenda. In that respect, the first read--
You went before, if that was the first example.
The first read, the first read was the Friday update information that was pushed forward. Having not heard anything, that's why it appeared on that agenda. But we since pulled it, had a great conversation around it, and have moved on beyond that item in terms of how that played out, so.
That's fine. What I'm hearing, this is just the way we're going to do business from now on, because the MSBA said it was legal.
I think two fronts.
If that's what you want to do, do it.
So there's a couple, there's a couple fronts.
And we don't do it anymore.
So in those conversations that were being held last week, having conferred with Tom Capps in terms of looking at our communication, I know we did that, had conversations with him, along with Missouri School Boards Association, I know, Scott, you talked with them as well.
I did, I talked to Susan, she was awesome.
I think there may be, there may be others to pull in as it relates to sunshine law, and as we've done each year, and you all know this because you've had these conversations with us, it's our board charter that speaks to how we do our work and how we conduct our business and how we have, you know, high expectations, and a big piece of that is communication. And so as we visited in the month of June, we made some tweaks to that, we spoke to bringing that back in September at our study session, and so we certainly want to do that. That's not anything that is set in stone, it should be completely fluid as we evolve and as we, you know, work to craft our practice and best practices in service to our community. The other thing I would say is, oftentimes that evolves. If you recall, 10, 15, 20 years ago even, you didn't have the email side of things, you didn't have texts, you didn't have social media. So we've, we've changed with the times, so to speak, so then as we think about this conversation this evening, do we need to shore some of those pieces up? Do we need to bring expertise as a refresher? Certainly ask the perception of other board members that have certainly navigated that as well, if there are any thoughts as it relates to this conversation.
So are we moving on to Board Communications, or did you want to move toward remarks first?
We can move into Board Communications.
Well, I think I've got one point on that, remaining on the last, last item. The, so first and foremost, there wasn't a discussion, right? And we also didn't have a study session this month. So typically, we get those updates earlier in the month.
Right.
And so, you know, one of those pieces is that this was July. I appreciated the update, there wasn't response, there wasn't a conversation, communication back and forth to create a meeting under sunshine law. There's no issue with that being an open record, I think it's been read out loud tonight, so that's not a concern.
And the right people were copied on it?
Well, but there weren't responses, and so, I think these are things that, they're important discussions to have, I think we're all for transparency. I think they're discussions that the board can have in, in sessions where we work through those issues on setting goals for ourselves and discussions that are constructive and not, not in some ways, gotcha, you know, moments. And so, the one thing I would say is, I think it's an important discussion to have--
You need to watch your mouth.
--about what we can do better. But, well, I mean, I mean, a moment where, where you go and describe a document, if you have a concern about that document, ask Nick to read it, and he did. I took that as an objective document, an objective update on an event that happened, to describe what happened. I wasn't there, so I don't know. Were you there? I don't, I don't think you were.
Why didn't you know about it?
And so, that's information, that's information that I found helpful to have a better understanding in the broader discussions that we're having as a district, as a state, and as a nation, discussions at the legislative events this past week, comments from Governor Parson on the difference between critical race theory and diversity, equity, and inclusion, and so--
So you're okay with that, and that's fine. And I'm, like I said, I don't make the rules for the board. I'm not okay with it. I am not okay with us sending our opinions to each other on email without being in a public session. I think it's wrong, it's probably no big deal, and maybe everybody else does it. I was also told during last week, nobody cares about sunshine. Nobody prosecutes it, nobody looks into it, it's kind of a dead issue.
Let's clarify who said it to, please. Who told you that?
MSBA.
Okay, thank you.
Why?
Just making sure everybody understands where that's coming from. Thank you.
So, so, can I ask, where do we need to go with this? Because, because I feel like there, there's a need for more discussion, because, because we need to, to come up with, what are we going to do? Correct? I, I mean, that's where you want, that's what, my understanding is where you want to go, yes?
Nick was asking for all my examples earlier, I have one more, but I, maybe I won't even bring it up. But the point is, nothing needs to be done if we're all okay with this, and we're just being wrong.
But Scott, you're employing, you brought this up for a reason, it's very near and dear to you, it's very important to you--
I've never seen this done in the last 12 years that I've been on the board.
Okay, but--
That doesn't mean it's wrong, it doesn't mean it's illegal, it doesn't mean it can't happen. I just think it shouldn't be done this way, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be going back to a time where we're starting to get information from each other without being in a public session.
And I don't think anybody on this board would disagree with that. I, I don't think any of us want to go back to a point in time when, whenever that might have been, because it hasn't been since I've been on the board.
Well, I don't want to go back to where we're sending emails to each other, or texts, to the whole group.
So, but is that--
Kind of a, I was always told, on any, you can't forward an opinion on any business that may come before the board, it is or may come before the board. And I was told by MSBA, oh, no, that's wrong. You can't have a discussion about it, but you can forward all the opinions you want. And I just think it's dangerous, I just think it's wrong, I--
In this, in your conversation with--
Keep doing it, but I just--
Is that from your recent conversation with MSBA?
Yes.
Okay. So then, what, where do we want to go with this? Because I feel like we either need to--
I'm saying we can do more than what's letter of the law legal--
Okay.
--in restricting ourselves and from these kind of communications behind the scenes.
And do you think that's something that the board as a whole needs to take time to discuss--
Sure.
--in our September--
Sure.
--work session?
We can discuss it, we can--
And then decide where we need to go, because I don't think just discussing--
I'm not making a proposal and making a motion tonight by anyone.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
And I think the other piece that is, the other piece that is a value add is leaning into, whether it's Mr. Tom Capps, School District Attorney, or the Missouri School Boards Association, or there may be another entity out there in terms of getting additional expertise on this, as we did last week, but certainly to be able to answer other questions that the board may have. That then supports a refresh of our Board of Education Charter as it relates to communication or other expectations.
Well, I think they've already weighed in, they're only going to weigh in what's legal and what's not legal, which is fine.
And to be clear, while this is, and look, we read it in a public setting, everything that happened is public knowledge, is public domain. And you always have the ability to pull any of that up and have a conversation of it in a board meeting.
Any what? The what did you say?
Yeah, you could have said--
Well, I did, I put that on the agenda--
Exactly, 100%. So it is public, and it is out there.
It's public and out there because I had to make it public and get it out there.
Not true. It's a public document, once I sent it, based on sunshine law. Now, do you have to go and request it?
So you're saying that somebody in the audience could have written a sunshine request and gotten it from the district?
They could have done that.
How did they know to do that?
You also have the ability to bring it forward, just as you did, and that is your prerogative as a board member. You can do that and bring it forward.
Okay, well, let me go down this road then. According to what I just heard, it would also be legal for you to send the next note to the other members and leave me off.
Right, would be correct, sure.
Now who's going to bring it forward?
If it's, if it goes to a quorum, then it's a legal public document, I guess, if anybody else wants to bring it forward, they certainly can.
But this is why we need to have discussions in public as opposed to email behind the scenes. That's my comment, that's my, and I'm, I'm giving you examples of why.
So, so can we--
We disagree.
We do disagree, very much.
You can do whatever you want, and--
Very much.
You're going to do it differently than we've done it for the last 10 years.
But Scott, you've worked--
Right?
You've worked too hard on this board to go this direction. I, I've watched you in board meetings--
Whoa, 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 what?
To, to just say, it's okay, we're going to do whatever, that, I've never seen you do that. And I've watched board meetings--
But I'm asking a specific question of Nick.
For years.
I just said, I never did it, Andy never did it, Kimberly never did it, and David never did it. And what I'm hearing from Nick is, so what? It's not le, it's not legal, so I'm going to do it. I say, you're just going to do it differently than we've done it the last 10 years, and he said, no. Yes. Own it.
So you are, you are telling me that everything that you did as a president, you did nothing behind the scenes in communication with other people, everything was done in meetings in front of people?
Not with a quorum. Not with a quorum. I absolutely had conversations, we can't not talk.
Because that's a discussion. Again, this, this comes down to, that's a discussion.
Right.
So then outside of--
We've never had a quorum discussion behind the scenes before.
Outside of Tom, Tom Capps or the Missouri School Boards Association, are there, are there others to be able to bring in and speak to best practice as we move forward? I think it's certainly worth having a conversation with board at a study session to be able to revisit our contract, our charter, but then also lay the questions out on the table to be able to provide a solution in and around. And as an administrator, having done this for 14 years as a superintendent, I would lean on my School District Attorney, and I would lean on the Missouri School Boards Association. Beyond that, it would be questions that I would pose to the state level in Jefferson City. If it became particular or specific, the other option might be legal counsel for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I don't know if there are other recommendations to be able to seek out expertise or consult us as it relates to best practice.